If everybody's here, we can call this to order. We're all here. All right. It's time to. Thank you very much. I believe that we're all here. Thank you very much. It's time to call. This May 10th meeting to order of the Orange County Board of Education. And I will read the public charge. The Orange County Board of Education pledges to its citizens to conduct its business in a courteous and productive manner, showing respect for fellow board members, staff, and citizens. The board asks its citizens to conduct themselves with the same courtesy towards both school personnel and each other. As per board policy, Robert's rules of order will be used to conduct meetings. A moment of silence will be observed before the meeting. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. So, Dr. Felder, do we have any recognitions this evening?
Good evening, Vice Chair Stevens. And to the board, staff, family members, students, and the community at large, indeed, we do. And so give me one second here. Actually, May is brimming with many recognitions and celebrations tonight. We'll highlight just a few, starting with this first one. A recognition of May as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. So in 1990, President George H. W. Bush designated the month of May as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. The month of May was chosen to commemorate the immigration of the first Japanese to the United States on May 7, 1843, and to mark the anniversary of the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad on May 10, 1869. The majority of the workers who laid the tracks were Chinese immigrants. In 2019, it was estimated that there are 5.2 million Asian residents in the United States, and 1.6 million is the estimated number of native Hawaiian other Pacific Islander alone or in combination residents. So Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month recognizes the contributions and influences of Asian Americans and Pacific Islander Americans to the history, culture, and achievements of the United States. With the recent wave of anti-Asian hate crimes we've seen throughout the United States, it's been a tough year for the Asian American Pacific Islander communities. But tonight, we are honored to recognize and celebrate them this month. Next slide, please. Can you spell kudos? Well, back in March, one of our Orange County school students, Kena Gerald Hassan, an eighth grader at AL Standback Middle School, won the Regional Spelling Bee at Duke after an intense tiebreaker. So, kudos to Kena, who will be competing in the state preliminary competition in June with the chance to advance to the national competition in Florida. Kena was video interviewed by her media specialist, Ms. Kenesha Smith, about her experience at the Duke Regional Spelling Bee. The full seven-and-a-half-minute interview will be posted on our website tomorrow. But for tonight, we would like to share just a small portion of that recording. Bear with us. It is a little blurry, so we'll put that up front, but exceptional nonetheless. So if we could just share a little clip from this video of Kena.
Can I please get everyone to mute while I'm getting the video?
Sure. Well, we are so proud of Kena's accomplishment. We wish her all the best of luck in June, and we hope to see her in Florida for the national competition. So way to go, and again, kudos to Kena. All right. All right. So next slide, please. So last week was National Teacher Appreciation Week. We said, we said that our ordinary educators left, to our ordinary educators last week. We recognized them. We continue to recognize them this week, and we will continue to do that throughout the year. They have all worked tirelessly with students, families, and each other to keep things moving forward despite what we know turned out to be such an unpredictable year. Through all the challenges we faced this year, educators and families have stuck together to show students a bright path forward. This Teacher Appreciation Week was just another opportunity to acknowledge the lengths that Orange County Schools educators will go to, to ensure each and every student has the tools to learn, to grow, and to thrive. We couldn't be more thankful to all of the educators and staff in Orange County Schools for their outstanding efforts this year. We applaud all of you again. Thank you. All right. More recognitions. So since 1972, that's almost 40 years, National School Nurses Day has been set aside to recognize school nurses. This week is School Nurses Week. School Nurses Day is actually on May 12. This year, building on the increased visibility of nurses' contributions, National School Nurses Week has expanded to Nurses Month. So the entire month of May, nurses are being celebrated nationally. National School Nurses Day was established to foster better understanding of the role of school nurses in the educational setting. School nurses serve as a critical health hub for students, ensuring that students are ready for learning by managing complex chronic conditions, identifying and addressing mental health issues, leveling the field on health disparities, promoting health behaviors, connecting families to healthcare providers, handling medical emergencies, and now, by helping students, families, and the district navigate through the global pandemic. It has been said that for every dollar spent on full-time, on a full-time school, Nurses Society would get $2.20 back. So talk about a good return on an investment. Indeed, school nurses are essential for healthy students, healthy schools, and healthy communities. Orange County Schools is fortunate to have school nurses, and we applaud each and every one of them today and every day. So thank you, Orange County Schools nurses. We applaud you. All right. So next, we want to recognize that May is also Mental Health Awareness Month. Hence all the green you see tonight. So Mental Health Awareness Month, also referred to as Mental Health Month, has been observed in May in the United States since 1949. And today, we are wearing green to show our support of and raise awareness of trauma and the impact it can have on the physical, emotional, and mental well-being of children, families, and communities. Each year, millions of Americans face the reality of living with a mental illness. Just as this slide states, you can't tell just by looking at someone what they're going through. Sometimes I wish you could just look at someone and tell, but we know that we can't always do that. So as a district, we have to help fight the stigma, provide support, educate the public, and advocate for policies that support people with mental illness and their families. We have a special section of our website devoted to mental health events and resources and in through Orange County Schools and our community partners during May. So if any of our partners have events they would like to share, please reach out to our Director of Student Support Services, Mrs. Sharita Cobb, at sharita.cobb@orange.k12.nc.us. Ms. Cobb can assist with helping to get the word out in the Orange County Schools community. Thank you. Next slide, please. More to celebrate and recognize. So May is Better Hearing and Speech Month. The Better Speech and Hearing Month was founded in 1927 by the American Speech Language Hearing Association. The aim of Better Speech and Hearing Month is to raise awareness around both speech and hearing problems, also known as communication disorders, while encouraging people to assess and address their speech and hearing needs if there is a problem. With speech and language disorders among the most common conditions that young children experience, we stress the importance of early intervention. Families should contact Kay Kotler, Lead Speech Language Pathologist for Orange County Schools, should they have any questions or need more information about speech and language support through the district. And last but not least, next slide, please. May is also Older Americans Month. Now, that's one I didn't know about. This formal recognition of older Americans began with President Kennedy back in 1963. At that time, only 17 million Americans reached their 65th birthday in comparison to over 40 million today. So for everyone celebrating their 65th and beyond birthday, congratulations, and we appreciate you. So, Mrs. Stevens, that concludes the recognitions for this month.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that. We have a lot to be thankful for. Excuse me. Please excuse me. Now we're down to the agenda adoption, and we might have some changes there.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Please go on, Mr. Atherton.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the following items pulled from the consent agenda. Policy 5027, Policy 5025, Local Budget Amendment, and the Phase 2, 2122 reorganization.
All right.
All clarifying questions?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton, is it your intent that some of these go on the action agenda? Normally, if something was pulled from concern, it would go on action.
Correct.
All right. So, Mr. Atherton, it is my suggestion that we add the items that are going to go on the agenda after the renaming. If that's okay. I'll say 6B. And maybe 6C, because do you want to talk about the Policy 5207, Will?
Yes, I, you know, they are very easy changes to.
Okay. That's fine. So we'll just make them like 6B and 6C. We'll just do them in order right after the renaming, if it's okay with. That's what, that's where we'll put it. So.
With one more clarification. I'm sorry, with the exception, with the exception of the reorganization, which I gather will be reserved for.
We're going to delete that. I think we all know that. We're going to just totally remove that from the agenda. We made that decision in closed session. Thank you to our legal counsel for that reminder, because I know the public was unaware of that. So the reorganization, we will totally pull, because we're going to talk about that at another time. But the policies and the budget item, we will put down in 6B, C, and just in that order. So did we, did I get a second on Will's motion to pull those and?
It's Sarah. I did a second.
Thank you, Sarah. All right. So all in favor? No, excuse me. We're, we're virtual. So, Atherton?
Yes.
Doyle?
Yes.
Howser? Moore?
Yes.
Smiley?
Yes.
And Stevens, yes. Thank you very much for those changes. And so now we're down to. Where are we? Oh, public comments. So I will, we're down to the public comment section, and I will read the statement, and then we have a few speakers this evening. "The Board of Education, as an elected representative body of the school district, wishes to provide a forum for citizens to address the board with public comments. A person wishing to address the board on a specific topic must sign up prior to the board's meeting by signing his or her name, address, and the topic on which he or she wishes to speak. Comments will be limited to three minutes. When the three minutes end, the speaker must stop speaking. Yielding time to another speaker is not permitted. The board will not have a discussion with any speaker. No profane or vulgar language will be permitted, or personal abuse against any person. Public comment should not address any specific student or personnel matter, complaints against any specific employee or student." So thank you. So our first speaker will be Dale Ward.
Hello?
Mr. Ward, you're unmuted.
Can you hear me? Hi. Sorry, one second. Good afternoon. My name is Dale Ward. I'm a 26-year-old musician and community organizer who's lived in Orange County for most of my life. I've attended Orange County Schools for most of my schooling. First, I'd like to thank the board and the board chair for the path they've chosen, which is one of inclusivity and societal progress. I'd also like to thank all the members who voted to rename CW Stanford and say to those who did not vote to do so that, quite frankly, you should be ashamed of yourself. "The Orange County GOP has tried to preserve the myth of white supremacy inside and outside our school system. They cry foul anytime this board makes a move to protect Black and Brown bodies and provide a safe space for learning for all students. The Orange County GOP has made their intentions clear. They would like to perpetuate white supremacy and violence against anyone who doesn't align with their archaic and closed-minded views." So make no mistake, the organization that is saying that this board is trying to teach students to hate America is the same organization that just last year organized the Trump Train Drive-By, where there were videos of members of that train giving Nazi salutes and screaming "white power" in front of Black families. I'm not here on behalf of any organization. I'm here on behalf of racial justice and prosperity, and just for what's morally right. And I'm urging the board and the chair to maintain the atmosphere that you've begun to create. I'd like to applaud you on your recent moves, and I'd like to just say that we should always be working to drive racism and hate out of our schools and out of our county at large. White supremacy and hate have no place here. What the Orange County GOP would like is to rewrite history, and I can tell you that I've had to unlearn an inordinate amount of things I learned during my schooling at Orange County Schools, nearly all of it being the history of this country's pursuit of world domination through an idiotic and genocidal form of imperialism that serves no one but the rich and powerful. The GOP has made it clear that they are scared of anything they don't understand and have no intention of trying to understand that, that which is different from them. They claim Orange County Schools are promoting the hatred of America, but as far as I know, the American flag still flies high outside of every school, and the national anthem is played before every sporting event. Please, I'm urging you, do not fold to the pressure from ill-informed and incredulous racists that go around screaming "white power" and giving Nazi salutes. If they get what they want, then eventually, we will all lose. Thank you.
Our next speaker this evening is Sherri Calligan.
Hello?
You're unmuted.
Good evening. Thank you, Vice Chair Stevens, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Dr. Felder, and district leadership, for this opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Sherri Calligan, and I'm both an Orange County School parent and a fourth-grade teacher at Cameron Park Elementary School. I'm speaking tonight about the reorganization plan and its potential impact on students and teachers in our district. I've witnessed firsthand the positive impact having a dedicated pre-K5 math facilitator has had on student achievement. Our math facilitator position has helped many teachers develop developmentally appropriate lessons, providing support to help students learn how to count, add, subtract, multiply, and divide. And I don't see how combining that position with a sixth-through-12th grade facilitator position would be beneficial for any student. That is far too much content for one person to be an expert on and cover well and help teachers know how to best develop, best develop and deliver lessons. Moreover, if students are not taught using developmentally appropriate practices in the early grades, there will be lasting negative impacts on their math learning in later years. What has our math facilitator done for teachers? The facilitator has worked to ensure that all teachers are aware of developmentally appropriate best practices. The math facilitator is always open to model lessons. The math facilitator has been open to co-teaching with any teacher who asks for help and has prepared materials so that students can learn in ways that are developmentally appropriate. The reorganization plan would have, described in the, the math facilitator position described in the reorganization plan was presented to and passed by the board on April 12, and it will leave a single person in charge of facilitating math instruction for nearly 200 teachers. There is no way that a single person can have a positive impact on the lessons for over 200 teachers. And by consolidating positions, it may save the district money in the long run that could be spent elsewhere, but I strongly believe it will have a negative impact on student achievement. I asked the board to reconsider this suggestion made by the private counsel for reorganization and really think about how this will impact instruction within our district and impact student support in math instruction. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Robin Mulkey. Is Robin unmuted?
I'm right here.
Okay, you're on.
Um. Interesting, the young man earlier, because I'm sure my grandpa would agree that y'all shut the door after horses are gone. Y'all have so many items on here that are already in effect, and you're going to vote on them tonight as if it's something for the future. You've got policies renaming. All these things are like decisions that are already made, and y'all vote on them after the fact. You know, who's running this place? You know, even employees don't get the respect to be told their job's eliminated before people are finding out on the internet. You know, what kind of respect does that show to your Orange County School family? But, you know, the action policies, info policies, rushing policies through, keep going. The lack of ease to get information. People, there were so many that will not answer emails. And you say no ugliness? Well, obviously, y'all dragging my grandpa's name through the mud may get an impact on that young man tonight. He was a diehard, my grandpa was a diehard Democrat. You deem my grandpa a segregationist, a racist. You drag his name through the mud, even to the point of the chair making reference to the Grand Dragon of a hate organization being chair of our board. You drag him through the mud, and you had no proof that he was any of what was just said. Nothing. You didn't start looking at your own minutes, and you didn't give credit for what he did. Do you realize that the schools were integrated with only two or three grades apart to minimize the violence that happened elsewhere and to minimize the bullying that was being done? You know, you don't give him credit for what he did well. You judged him without factor proof. The Madam Chair, do we hold you responsible for the learning loss during COVID because you didn't do enough? I mean, that's as well as what you judged to my grandpa. Y'all walk through with a bag of rocks and think you've done nothing wrong, but you have no proof that he is who you were slinging mud at. You know, he'd agree. Don't judge a man by his color, and I'm not going to get the words exactly right, but by the strength of his character. Did you do that with Charlie Stanford? Can you look yourself in the mirror and say that you judged him by the strength of his character, not but what you assumed because of color of his skin? So, you know, keep the math facilitators. Don't go spending quarter of a million, half a billion dollars to rebrand CW Stanford. And the kids I talked to, they got no clue who any of the schools are named after. But this is so important, you're throwing money at it. So I'm to guess you don't need any extra money for anything. But wait a minute. We just heard math facilitators that are star educators are being eliminated because what? We need to buy new t-shirts with a different name. Look yourself in the mirror and see, did you judge him by the strength of his character before you started slinging mud? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mulkey. The next item on our agenda is our consent agenda that's been adjusted. We need a motion, please.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Correct. Do we have a second on the consent agenda?
Okay.
All right. We had a second. All right. All in favor? Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Dahl?
Yeah.
Howser? Moore?
Yes.
Smiley?
Yes.
Stevens says yes. Thank you very much. Our consent agenda has been approved. Ms. Stevens?
I don't, I think the personnel report was just by accident left off the consent agenda. Would it be possible to get a motion to approve the personnel report as amended in the closed session?
It's not on there? It's not on there, because we, well, the reorganization has been pulled. We know that. So I see what you're saying. The personnel, and we need that personnel report, don't we?
So if we could just have a separate motion to approve the personnel report as?
Right. So we've done this. So now I'm asking for a separate motion to approve the personnel report that, we don't see it, but we talked about it. Right, right. So we've done this. So now I'm asking for a separate motion to approve the personnel report that we don't see it, but we talked about it. Thank you, Sarah. And was that a second by Ms. Howser?
Will.
Oh, I'm sorry. It came from that room. Sorry. All right, I'm sorry. All right. So, um, all in favor, so Sarah?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Howser?
Yes.
Doyle?
Yes.
Atherton?
Yes.
And Stevens says yes. So now our personnel report has been approved. Thank you very much for keeping us uh, in order. To the legal counsel, yes. So the information items, we will start for staff meal prices will be our first information item, please.
Ms. Stevens, I apologize. This is Melanie. There are two individuals that still are signed up for public comment.
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. I mean, I don't see that. So, um, yeah, all right. Well, I guess we'll go back because we have moved on, but, um, we will. So I'm sure the board, you all don't mind, do you? No, they don't mind. So thank you. Thank you. We will. So will you put the first? I, I have the list and Ms. Mulkey was the last one. Oh, now I see another one. Yes, now I see, I guess that's the magic of computers. So Allison, um, are you there?
I am here.
All right. So you're up. So sorry.
No problem. Thank you so much, Brenda Stevens. I really appreciate you and I appreciate all of you board members who are willing to serve. Um, I know it's been a very difficult year for you all to navigate COVID and all of the stress and unknowns that you have been walking through. Um, I want to commend you though, on your bravery in standing up for equity in our schools. It has long been, um, clear that we needed courageous leaders like you all to stand up for students who have been marginalized and whose stories have not been told and, um, and who have been intimidated in the, in the school system because they don't fit the profile of white, Christian affluent students. And so all of your efforts to, to make a welcoming environment for them, to look at their needs, to look at how you are approaching their learning needs are so, they're, they're so welcomed and so noticed. And we want you, I want you to know that we are watching, the community is watching and we're applauding you. We want to support you in your work to bring about, uh, a school system that we know that when it serves the least of our students, it is doing what is best for all of our students. And, and so we, I, I just want to encourage you to stay true to your values, stay true to what you ran on when you, when you all ran. Um, I remember each one of your campaigns and what you promised. And so thank you so much. You are appreciated and we know that your work is difficult. And when a section of the community puts something out there that is based on lies and misinformation, we're watching that too. And we hope that people will take time to get the facts and to really find out about what the intention is behind, um, school renaming's and, um, and that we can come to a time in this community for healing around that, for having more open conversations about it where people's feelings aren't really hurt and they're damaged, but that we can, um, understand what it means to go forward with the full story. So thank you all again so much. I won't take up any more of your time and I appreciate you coming back to get me, Brenda.
All right. Thank you. So Ms. Stowe, the other name that's on here, uh, is Stephanie Bordeaux. She reached out to me and asked me not to call her name, saying that she would not, uh, be available to speak. She was gonna speak on reorganization. Do you have another name, Ms. Stowe?
Yes, that's lines 59, 60 and 61. The first one is Sonia Desai.
All right. Sonia, you're up.
Hi, my name is Sonia Desai and I've lived in Orange County for at least two decades now and, um, I wanted to talk again about, um, what Dellen, the last woman who spoke, we're talking about as well. Um, I also wanna see more anti-racism education because I think there are such misunderstandings. From people who, from white people who have been used to, and not just white people, but a lot of, all of us have internalized, um, the, these stereotypes of, about certain people. And this is like, uh, like they say in the Racial Equity Institute, like the water we swim in. Um, I know when I was doing schooling here, I was very affected. I started internalizing a lot of that. And I, there was a lot more support, um, for white people like, and for especially upper class than middle class people as well because um, and I saw a lot of, um, lack of attention for working class, um, kids and families and for black indigenous people of color. And I want to see, I think there does need to be like more community conversation about why that, why is that happening? I think so, so many people know the history, but so many people don't also. And this, these stereotypes have been used to, um, for election purposes and things like that. And I think, um, part of education is to make sure that there is space for this, um, anti-racism education to understand why were the history books written from, um, the white settler perspective? Why were the books written? What exactly is the purpose of our education right now in schools? What is the purpose of teaching? What is being taught in schools right now? Is it to create social hierarchy? Is it to say these people are smart? These people are not as smart. Is it to get certain people access to certain type of income and jobs? Is it to like develop, like for certain companies to have intellectual property claims, like with the vaccine? There is like, um, the intellectual property claims are being used in trade deals and being used, vaccines are being withheld from other countries. The USA is suing other countries from producing vaccine. Um, this type of history and international history, the, from the perspective of the people in the global south is highly important to include in our education, to have that perspective. What is the purpose of the education? Because a lot of, um, a lot of times I've, I noticed in my education that um, it's.
You, excuse me, you're, you're, you're past your three minutes. Could you kind of wrap it up? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just, um, just, I hope that there is community discussion about anti-racism education, transformative justice process, what conflict resolution looks like, what processing trauma looks like, how we can do that in support groups within the schools and mental health support. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. The next speaker that we have on the list is Latranta Strong. Will you unmute her?
She's unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much, um, Madam Chair for the evening. And thank you so much, board members. You know, I think, uh, some time ago when equity work was first being discussed or was being discussed in a way that we were looking and seeing that there was going to be some change in our district. I think we expected those of us that were paying attention, that there would be backlash in our community. And it took some time, but now we see backlash. And I am really proud of the work that many of you have forged in our district. I am proud that we have a district that is, that is willing to recognize that change needed to happen. And I'm proud of the way that our district is moving forward in that work. I understand that for some people this is difficult. And as some of the other speakers have said before, we have to do more within our community to make it a little bit more palatable for folks so that we can have the change that we need in our, in our community. Seeing comments that speak of black people as inferior to white people. Seeing comments that talk about black lives are not valued in this district. Seeing the misinformation of certain policies that were actually attributed to DPI or other boards within our community being attributed to you folks, it's hard. It's hard. And I, I would encourage folks that are in, on the line that have, that do not, that have not been, uh, paying attention to our school board for some time to continue to pay attention, ask the questions and let's have a real community discussion around how we all should be valued in our community. I thank you so much for the work that you have done. And I ask you to stay the course. It's gonna become more difficult. I think it's wise to always question how we're spending in our district. It makes good sense to question how we're spending, but when we're making spending choices that is gonna ultimately result in raising the achievement of everyone in our district. Cause we talk often about the achievement of, of students of color being down, but the achievement of white students is also down and we have to do something to improve our school district and to continue to, to stay the course. So I thank you and I, I thank you for letting me speak and I look forward to more of the work that you guys do.
All right. Thank you. And next speaker is Heather Redding.
Good evening. Um, I'm a resident of Orange County and I'd like to address the board to share my continued support of its equity policies and initiatives. There's a very powerful statement, um, by an unknown author which goes, quote, "When you're accustomed to privilege, equality feels like oppression," unquote. Apparently, a concerted and organized pushback by the Orange County GOP is being orchestrated to oppose the school board's deep-seated commitment to equity. I hope the board continues to forge ahead as these attacks are coming from those who are accustomed to privilege and who are now pushing back because they're being asked to share power. If nothing else, the attacks being launched at the school board only illuminate and reinforce the need for an equity officer for affirmative statements like Black Lives Matter, for a gender support plan, for a black student union and other recently implemented equity initiatives. Those who are pushing back have demonstrated repeatedly that they will die on the Columbus Day Celebration Hill before acknowledging that this American tradition glorifies genocide. They repeatedly demonstrate an inability to comprehend the full meaning of the word equity and would rather fight against statements like Black Lives Matter than simply affirm that our black students' lives matter. They unabashedly demonstrate transphobic and heteronormative values that harm children and they simply cannot imagine a world where power is held by those who have been historically marginalized. These are people who are accustomed to power and privilege and now that other groups are claiming power and affirmation, white supremacists and bigots in our county are acting like they're oppressed. Again, their complaints only reaffirm the need for these equity initiatives as though GOP and its supporters would prefer that Orange County function like small town America from the 1950s. So people fighting against equity are cut from the same cloth as those who jeered at Ruby Bridges on our first day of school in 1960, as those who threw food at the students in Woolworths in 1960 and as those who fought to preserve the institution of chattel slavery in the South. So as a critical institution in Orange County, please keep your eye on the target, stay on course and stay unyielding in your commitment to equity. And please don't cede to the voices of today's bigots because you're doing excellent work. Thank you all of you.
All right. So now board members, Ms. Stowe, that is the last name that I see on here. Do you join me with that, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. So now we will, uh, return to our, uh, let's see, item, uh, staff meal prices. Item four. Thank you.
Good evening, Vice Chair Stevens, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Dr. Felder, staff and the public. Tonight I have the privilege to present to you for information and consent the meal price recommendations for the upcoming 21-22 school year. Included in the agenda packet is information on section 747 of the Consolidated Appropriations Act as it's related to child nutrition service meal prices. The intent of this act is to ensure that sufficient funds are provided to food service accounts for paid lunches. As stated in section 747 of the act, school food authorities will be required to raise prices for paid lunches due to a negative balance in the nonprofit account as of December 31st, 2020. Therefore, based on the fact that the child nutrition department had a positive cash balance at the end of the year, the 2021, or sorry, the 21-22 meal prices will remain the same as the 2021 prices. Recommended prices are as follows. Breakfast will be a dollar forty for students and à la carte for adults. Lunch will be $2.45 for elementary, $2.95 for middle and high and à la carte for adults and staff. Please note that the U.S. Department of Agriculture has extended the reimbursement for free school meals to all students through the seamless summer option, regardless of their income through the 21-22 school year. Set meal prices are required as they impact the student's free or reduced status, which can impact additional benefits and services for our Orange County schools, students and community. Also, we're asking that meal prices be set in the event that the federal government later decides to change the policy from operating under the seamless summer option to the national school lunch program. But know that OCS will continue to provide nutritious and healthy meals to our students. Tonight, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education receive for information and approve the following meal prices for the 2021 school year to be effective July 1st, 2021. Again, those are breakfast, all students at a dollar forty and adults will be à la cartes. And lunch for elementary will be $2.45 and middle and high will be $2.95. I'll now pause for any questions.
Do we have any questions? Yes, sir.
Um, so for breakfast, I assume what you're, the 140 is referring to middle school and high school. Elementary is still a universal breakfast?
Good question, Mr. Atherton. Actually, what we have been told is that the extended waiver is all students next year that are enrolled. So even middle and high with the extension of the USDA waiver will be available to get free lunch.
Breakfast.
Or sorry, yes, sir. Free breakfast and free lunch.
Fantastic. Thank you.
That's, yes, Sarah.
Ms. Pitts, I think this is your first presentation in this new role maybe. Um, uh, it's good to see you. Um, I, um, so I think it's great that they extended this. Um, and I did see the note about how important it still is for us to collect the free and reduced price forms. Um, and if I'm understanding that chart correctly, it looks like, um, maybe last year we had those forms collected from about 41% of students and this year it's about 21%.
Actually, those are our demographics. So last year we were operating with about 41% free and reduced in the district. And this year we're operating with about 21% of our students who have filled in forms and have qualified. So that may impact if the government does, or DPI does not hold us harmless, that could impact potentially some of the programs and benefits that the school district can be eligible for. So yes, it is extremely important that everyone fill those out.
And that's really important for next year, not this year, right? Like this year it's okay. Next year, that's going to be really important.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Could, could I just, um, so I know we're gonna put out an all-out effort to do that. Can I just request, um, as you're thinking about that? I know that the, we have gotten far fewer of the Can I just request, as you're thinking about that, I know that the, we have gotten far fewer of those forms back from high school students. And I think that undercounts the number of free and reduced price students in our district. So I don't know what creative ways we have to get those forms back from the high schoolers. I know we've tried some things, but I would love to see us get that be more representative.
Thank you for that recommendation.
Do we have any other comments?
Motion to approve?
Thank you, Mr. Atherton. Who was that second? Thank you. Thank you. So we have a, a motion and a first and a second. And so all in favor, Atherton?
Yes.
Doyle?
Yes.
Hauser? Moore? Smiley?
Yes.
And Stevens says yes. Thank you very much. Motion passes. Thank you for that. And I tell you, where can you go to eat for less than $3? I mean, that's pretty good. When I sub, I, I, not in this county, I always eat in the cafeteria. So the next item on the agenda is School Renaming Committee Update.
Good evening, everyone. So the proposed timeline and process presented to and approved by the board on March 8th for the renaming of Cameron Park and CW Stanford said that principals would form a broad, richly diverse school renaming committee, representing equal numbers of at least three to four of each. Certified and classified staff, parents and guardians, students if appropriate, community members, and central office staff. So the call for committee members was posted on the district website. Initially, there were eight applicants. However, the group was not broadly diverse and all stakeholder groups were not represented. The principals, Mr. Witter and Mr. Rochay, asked the district to extend the deadline and to continue to accept applications. In addition to extending the deadline and leaving the applications posted on the district website, a Connect Ed message was sent to families and community partners were reached out to, made aware of the district's search for renaming committee members, and asked to publicize this opportunity. After this outreach, there were 10 additional applicants, making a total of 18. And while the application continued to remain posted, there were no new applicants. The group of 18 is now broadly diverse, all stakeholders are represented, and this is when they are looked at as a whole group. However, if we were to split the group into two separate groups, then they would not meet this criteria because we just didn't get enough applicants. So the principals who are leading this work and the central office staff who are supporting the principals in leading this work decided to pose the question to the 18 applicants to see if they would be willing to serve as one renaming committee for both schools, and they all agreed. In addition, the proposed timeline and process presented to and approved by the board on the March, on March, March 8th also said that the school renaming committees would be facilitated by the school's principals. However, the principals requested to be part of the process as opposed to facilitating the process. They also thought it was important for the process to be impartial. The principals who are leading this effort, this work, and the central office staff who are supporting them decided to ask for a dispute settlement center to facilitate the process since this is their area of expertise. All meetings are open meetings with minutes agendas and recording of the meeting. These are all posted on our district website, should the, should the board or community like to access them. Next slide, please. And so at this time, if there are no questions, we, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education receive for information and approve the revision to the school renaming committee process that it is now one school renaming committee versus two, and that we have the addition of leading facilitators. Are there any questions?
Oh, you're on mute. That's okay. I knew, I knew what you were saying. So, thank you so much. And I first wanted to just acknowledge everybody that has signed up to do this hard work and have these discussions. One of the questions that comes to mind is, I know you said as separate, they weren't meeting the original representation. Can you give an idea of, you know, I, I saw that there were a lot of parents and, you know, people in the community. Can you give an idea of, is there more parents from one school than the other? Or are we, you know, just, just how that representation breaks down? Are we, you know, one of the key things was making sure each school had a good representation of, you know, their area. Is, is that still maintained or is there an imbalance even though we've done this? Do you understand my meaning? It's kind of just asking about the parent representation.
Yes. And, and I will speak to the best of my recollection and I ask for any of the other central office members who are joining in to observe the process to let me know if I'm off, if I'm making a mistake. But I feel like there are parents that represent various schools. I don't think that, that there are just parents for Cameron Park or CW Stanford. But I, I'll pause there to see if anyone else is aware of the breakdown for parents.
Let, maybe I should ask it differently. Are there parents from both schools on the committee versus parents that are not even at the school? Does that make sense?
Oh, yes, there are.
Thank you.
If I could add, Mr. Atherton, the list of, and what we could do is certainly note which schools the parents who are on the committee are affiliated with. But the list of all of the renaming committee members are posted on the district's site in the link in the slide previous to the one you're looking at now.
Yes, and I, I did see several people that are from the community and that was great to see that there's a broad representation. I just, glancing at it, I couldn't tell if there was actual parents from the school currently. But that, I appreciate it.
All right. Yes, Ms. Hauser.
I just, just to build on that a little bit. First, I want to just say, I actually watched the videos after the fact with two of, two, two of the meetings. And I was really impressed. What an incredible group. I thought they had really thoughtful questions. The deliberations are candid and careful. Dr. Keeling, you and Mr. Johnson are doing a great job kind of not taking, staying in the background, being of service to the group, but letting the group do the decision. So I want to thank you for that. I did have a question to build on, well, on Mr. Atherton's point about teacher representation. Because I didn't see teachers from CW Stanford. If I, I think there were three teachers from Cameron Park and maybe one teacher from Stanford. I wasn't sure how many parents were active parents. I just wasn't, and I, I didn't know. And it's really a question of, is it important to have the school's current community represented on, on the committee? Because I just, I'm not sure. That's, that's the.
You know, Ms. Hauser, would you repeat that? You said, is it important to have? I didn't hear it. Could you say that again?
It's important for the active community at Cameron Park, the active community at CW Stanford. The people that are there today in the current climate, in the current culture, to be part of the naming, renaming process. So, all due respect, because the people that are on the committee are great. I just have a question about the, the representation for the school.
Right. And so, Ms. Hauser, your point is well-taken, but to Dr. Keeling's point in what she's presented thus far, there were a number of opportunities and outreach to solicit participants. And so the, the group that we're working with is, Dr. Keeling said, is certainly a diverse stakeholder group and represents those who are willing to serve on the committee.
Well, that's good. Well, and let me say is, you know, you don't have to be a parent to be a conscientious hard worker for the school district. Let me just say that.
If I could just add, I do believe that the principals and the central office staff supporting them in this effort certainly did their due diligence in soliciting participants. And at some point, we, we had to move the work forward. And we're very fortunate to have this very diverse stakeholder group and, as you stated, are doing amazing work in these meetings and moving the, the work forward. So they're very clear in their charge. They want to be part of this renaming committee and are, are doing a great job at it.
All right. Well, did we just make a motion?
Yes, Ms. Doyle has her hand up.
I was going to make a motion. Is that okay, Ms. Smiley? Yeah, I was just going to move that we accept the revisions. The process is requested by both the principals and the central office staff, that there be one committee and the meeting facilitators.
I'll second. That's a motion. Do you have a second? Who was the second?
Second, Smiley.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Smiley. All right. So all in favor, Atherton?
Clarity question. We are just approving the process, not timing or anything else, correct?
That's correct. Yes. We're just approving that, that they will stay the course and they will just have one group, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So Atherton said yes. Doyle?
Yes.
Hauser? Moore? Smiley?
Yes.
And Stevens says yes. Thank you. Thank you very much. So the next item, and I want to get this correct, we are down at six. This was 6A, and I said 6B would be 5207. And so, Mr. Atherton, will you take it from there?
Yes, absolutely.
And then, and after that, take 5205, you know, because we're just going to go down, okay?
Totally. So with Policy 52, or 5027, 7257 Weapons and Explosive, Explosives Prohibitive, I would just like to request a change to the wording under the Section 1A, which is, or 1, which is talking about the exclusions. And I would like to just make the modification that states, let's see, a weapon or explosive used solely for education or school sanctioned ceremonial purposes are used in a school-approved program conducted under the supervision of adult whose supervision has been approved by the superintendent or delegate in writing before the event. And that would be the requested change that I would make. And open to hearing any thoughts or other suggestions on that.
I'm fine with it. I'm, I'm asking our legal counsel.
That was actually her suggested wording to mine.
Okay. Well then, there you go. All right. So that takes care of that.
If there's no
I'm fine.
Comments, I'll make a motion to approve with the amended wording.
Second, Smiley.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Smiley. All right. So we will, all in favor, so Atherton?
Yes.
Doyle?
Yes.
Hauser? Moore?
Yes.
Smiley?
Yes.
And Stevens says yes. Thank you, Mr. Atherton. You want to go on to your next one?
Yes. So Policy Code 5025 prohibit, prohibit of drugs and alcohol. I would just like to amend the opening statement of that that says, I'll just read the paragraph. The board prohibits the possession or use of illegal drugs, non-prescribed prescription medicines, and the possession or consumption of alcohol beverages, including beer, malt liquor, or wine on the property owned or occupied by the school system. Any person who possesses, consumes, uses, or appears to be under the influence of alcohol, non-prescription, non-prescribed prescription medicine, or the illegal use of drugs will be asked to leave the school property or event immediately. And if he or she fails to do so, may be arrested or prosecuted for criminal trespass, disorder conduct, or any other charges that may be appropriate. Any suggestions, comments, questions around that? And Ms. Stevens, this one was also reviewed with the attorney as well.
All right. But Ms. Smiley has a comment.
If Ms. Stevenson's good with it, that's totally fine. My only question was, I thought I had a recollection that we might have a different place in policy where we talk about non-prescribed prescription medications, not where you don't have a prescription. But if, if Ms. Stevenson thinks that this is a great change, then I don't have a concern with it.
Specific to kids that are visiting our schools, this policy.
Yeah, you have two more specific policies on this. One for employees and one for students. So this is really a more general policy that basically encompasses volunteers or others who, I mean, not volunteers, visitors or others who are on campus. Because you have more specific staff policies and student policies that do mention misuse of prescriptions.
All right. So thank you. So Atherton made that motion. And Sarah, was that a second?
It sure is. Sure.
I thought it was. All right. So now we will call, call the vote. Atherton?
Yes.
Doyle?
Yes.
Hauser? Moore?
Yes.
Smiley?
Yes.
And Stevens says yes. Thank you. Thank you. So I think that was your last policy one. Is that correct, Will?
Last policy, but one other item full.
Right. Yeah. That's, that's what I stated. Last policy one. The next item we're going to discuss, I almost said dissect, would be Book Nook.
Yes.
Is that correct? All right. So kicking off, Will.
So from this item is a budget amendment which talks about the 292K we're spending towards Book Nook. I'm bringing this up because I still have concerns with Book Nook. And I believe it is and can be a great program if we put the right things around it. In fact, on my way to this meeting, I got a call that Book Nook had done an update and students were in the wrong levels today and that the tutors were notifying Book Nook that there had been an adjustment. I also had a couple of other parents call me and tell me that they had different tutors than what they'd been having for the prior, prior weeks. And I've also talked to schools and teachers and such that they have no ability to help somebody when they have an issue. So I, I would just like to have a discussion about, you know, this money of the 292 and how can we really make this a great program and give the structure around it around our schools and parents and our district? With that, I'll back up and let other board members speak. Or I don't know if I'm the only one hearing about these issues or concerns, but I do think there's a good opportunity to make this a great program for us as part of our tool. but I do think there's a good opportunity to make this a great program for us as part of our tools to help students.
Correct. Yes, Carrie.
I just have sort of a question, which is maybe of Dr. Felder. And I appreciate what you're bringing forward, Will, and I agree that we want to have the support to make it a great program. I remember in, in our board weekly update, Dr. Felder, it talked about like percentage of sort of successful experiences had, had gone up in the past week since the prior week. And so I guess I'm wondering, like, how frequent are the errors that we're hearing about? And, and from what Mr. Atherton's saying, it sounds like there was a glitch again today. So maybe that shifts the numbers a little bit.
Yes. So thank you, Mr. Atherton and Ms. Doyle, for your inquiry. I'm actually going to turn this over to staff who are leading this effort to provide an update. I can tell you that they are in constant communication with Book Nook. They have regular meetings, weekly meetings with them and are working through some of the challenges. My understanding is that overall, the program is working well, but there are certainly some wrinkles and challenges that have bubbled up and Book Nook has been responsive towards addressing them. And so, but I'm going to let staff in the curriculum and instruction department, who can speak more in detail about what the challenges have been and how they are working with Book Nook to address the challenges. Dr. Gammon, Mrs. Cremmons, and Dr. Dawson.
Sure thing, Dr. Felder, and thank you so much for the questions. We're very much aware of the, the weekly concerns and feedback that we've received from families. We have held multiple parent information sessions, one as recently as this past week with our families, just to provide an opportunity and open forum for families to share concerns that they have, to be able to troubleshoot those in real time. I did encourage families on the parent information session call to reach out to me directly in, in the immediate if they're having issues with connectivity, just so that we can, can help to alleviate that process and make it more efficient. A couple of key concerns, and Mr. Atherton, you've noted those in a previous communication, were around the ticketing process. When, when families were reaching out needing help, there was kind of a labor intensive process where they were sending an email but receiving an automated response back instead of immediate support. Book Nook immediately troubleshoot that, put a process in place where they now have a, a real time team that is able to reply to those emails or those emails in real time. It's not an automated response. So they've kind of taken that an extra step out of the way. And they've also established, and this will begin next Monday on May seventeenth, an actual help desk. So they do have folks that will be on the other end of the line if parents need immediate assistance. That help desk has actually went live this week for Orange County school staff, so that we can reach out directly to folks in the afternoons when there are issues to, to address today. And Mr. Atherton, I heard some, some similar concerns this afternoon, just prior to the board meeting. Book Nook has been in frequent communication, which is a positive. They reached out directly to myself and others today and essentially just updated us that they rolled out a new system today that was meant to help address the tutor attendance issues. So essentially, when, when they've had some instances where tutors have not shown up, they've been subbing those tutors out in real time, but that process has not been happening as quickly as they would like. So today, they rolled out a new process to make sure that the tutor was in place quicker. There appears to be, based off of the feedback, they gave me a glitch in their system that, that caused an issue that might have had a ripple effect, even to families who have, have been actively accessing the program and have not had, had issues. They may have been impacted today as well. They assured me that they were sending an immediate response out to families this afternoon, an immediate communication. They were going to troubleshoot the issue today and then get back to our team. I, I think the biggest thing for us right now is, from a data standpoint, we receive a weekly update from Book Nook. That update essentially tells us how many students have accessed the program. It tells us how many tutors have actually turned their sessions on. And it, and it tells us essentially like how, how long that activation period occurred between the tutor and the students. That trend has, has remained pretty stable throughout each week. We've not seen like a negative trend with that. If anything, that's been more of a positive uptick. And families who have been able to access have shared positive experiences with the program. What Ms. Stowe, our communications director, and I worked with Book Nook on last week was to, to send surveys out to families, just to gather from them a couple of kind of critical things. If they had signed up for Book Nook but never joined for the first session, we wanted to know why. If they did join for the first few sessions, but then we saw a dip in the second week, we wanted to know why. And then if we had families that have been on the program consistently, we wanted to know what things were going well and why. From that data, and we just received that information today, we've had a laundry list of different types of responses. I'm going to kind of be very high level for tonight, and then we can, can add more information in the board weekly update. Some families noted that the after-school program has at times been a barrier because the child has not remembered to log on at their appropriate time. So that's been somewhat of an issue. There have also been issues where there have been athletics or other extracurricular activities. So when the families initially decided to sign up for the program, they didn't realize there would be that type of conflict, and they've had to make a choice. So they've chosen to not access Book Nook because they've had athletics or something in place of that. And then we've also heard, you know, a wide range of things just around tutor issues where there have been no shows with tutors, or it's been just a situation where it could be a health issue or something that just calls them to miss on certain days. So the, the bottom line for us is, we are very aware, Book Nook's very aware, that a tutor not being present is unacceptable. We have seen some positive gains in the communication and tutors being present, but we do realize there's still work to be done. And hopefully, we will have just more concise information and an update for the board at the end of this week.
Bonnie, since Will, will it, Bonnie, since you spoke last?
Um, I just want to thank you for that. And like Will said, I, I think that Book Nook has so much potential for us when it comes to learning laws. I would love to see it in our long-term arsenal of tools for our kids. So I'd love to see it work. The piece that's missing in this conversation is what's happening in our schools. Because when Book Nook fails, often the teachers or the principals are getting contacted. And it may not be through email. Not all our families have email or use email, but they're getting contacted. And I understand that our teams, our schools are spending some amount of time trying to figure out what happened. The other thing is, some parents, when they, the tutor's not there, or there's a connection problem, they just log off and go on with their day. So when all the problems are not being reported to us, and the question about, can we get our schools, you know, just recognize that, that parents are going to go to their schools? So let's, let's put the schools in the mix, because now we're relying on Book Nook to tell us what happened the way they're, you know, what happened with their system, but we're not hearing from the schools about what our family's experience is.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Dr. Gammon, for all of the details. I know y'all have been working hard. And I, you know, I've heard, as you mentioned, some changes and, you know, the, the one thing that I think can, can really help us, and this is my humble opinion, you know, just adding more to what Bonnie's saying, is us just having maybe an email address for Orange County, that's booknook@orangecounty, and then a webpage that, that teachers can refer people to or point to, or say, this is the person to go talk to, because just as Bonnie mentioned, what I'm hearing is they call and they're referred back to Book Nook. And, you know, if Book Nook isn't doing what they need to do, or we're having an issue, or it's a one-off, right? Whatever their scenario is, their technology isn't working, cell service, whatever it is, we don't, it's not readily known to, to talk to you, for example. Like, I've had people call me, and I'm like, I, I don't know who, I don't know who to give you to. But I, I think if we, at least, as this is a great technology, I think it's a great way to engage. And, and if we could put, you know, some website or something together to allow people to, or teachers to look at and know what's going on, or anybody in the district, see what's going on, and that email where a teacher could, could forward it, or they could email and say, hey, I've heard of an issue, FYI, and we could track it, because I worry that we're really having Book Nook do everything, right? Did somebody open a ticket? Or what does your system say happened? And we're not able to, you know, get our, our side and have a, a way for people to be able to engage and also be heard. And some of these issues may be really, really simple to address. But I'm glad to hear, you know, earlier, as you mentioned, there was a glitch, and it's consistent with what I heard today as well. But I, I really believe this is a good program that, you know, is going to be good long-term if we could just wrap our hands around it for our side of it.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Atherton. Dr. Gammon, can you speak to what has been communicated to schools? I know more information is going out, but could you speak to that? Thank you.
Sure thing. And, and Mr. Atherton, Ms. Howser, and others, you're spot on in, in our thinking as far as that communication to schools. Over the, the course of the last week and a half or two weeks, we've shared direct communication, first with principals. That communication was around a lot of the points that I noted earlier about the change in the help ticket process and just that immediate feedback that families could receive directly from Book Nook's service. Principals were guided in that information, so they know that if they receive an email from a family or a contact in real time, that they can direct them immediately to that support desk. We then funneled that to teachers as well. Within that communication to teachers, we, we've also placed in there that if they receive an email or a message from families, that that should be forwarded directly to myself or the family liaisons that work with those individual schools, so that we can help problem solve in the moment, but also so that we are taking it off the plate of the teacher right then, and that we can be that direct point of contact to Book Nook, so that we can pivot them back to the families. I, I do understand and, and hear you as far as there being kind of a forward-facing Orange County school support. But a part of that partnership with Book Nook is the support with tutors, and some of those concerns has to come from their folks because they're in control of that aspect. And what we can simply do is ensure that families have an immediate place that they can go to, which would be their help desk. That help desk option in the beginning proved problematic because they were receiving an automated response that, that was really more troubling and more time-consuming than a direct response. Now that Book Nook has remedied that, our hope is that whether it's principal, whether it's teacher, whether it's myself or a family liaison, that that would be that immediate feedback that a family would receive. And then that we would continue with these family information sessions as well. And then any other kind of items that we can add into the mix. We do have another meeting scheduled with Book Nook for this week. And we'll just continue to kind of brainstorm and take those ideas. So I really appreciate you all for sharing.
Okay. I, I really hope we can get a site or something, a page up, so people can refer to it. And as updated information comes available, anybody has access. So thank you very much for that. Chair, I appreciate it. And with that, I'll motion to approve the budget amendment.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Okay.
All right. Howser seconded the motion. And all in favor, Heather, excuse me?
I, I, I had some questions about Book Nook as well. I'm sorry, I had my hand up.
Oh, 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 please. Yeah, all right, all right.
Is, is this an okay, from, from a process perspective, is this an okay time to do that? I can also email them.
Is he still here?
Yeah, I'm fine to respond at this time, or you can email either way.
Okay. There's, there's a couple of things that I just want to make sure that you're looking at. One of them is how long the sessions have been. Because my experience has been, in my household, it has not been the whole half hour. So I would look at that. I also think you should look at the reading levels that students were assigned to. I would be, I know we discussed that when we first approved this, but I would be interested to know, again, how that was done. And whether you are looking at that, that, those levels again. And then the third thing is how we are evaluating the effectiveness of the program in terms of, all of these things aside, like in terms of actual impact on student growth. What I have seen of it, it really seems like it has a lot of potential to improve student literacy if students are placed at the right level. And so that's how, sort of how those questions come together is around how we're going to evaluate the effectiveness, whether we have our own way to do that in, in addition to, to Book Nook's evaluation of their progress.
Thank you, Ms. Smiley. Those questions, they run kind of a similar trend to what we heard in our family information session this past week. So a, a couple of pieces there. As far as the process, like how long the session lasts, that's, that's great input and feedback that we can share with their team, just to ensure that there's fidelity with that. So I, I made note of that. As far as the levels, Book Nook does review that. So there's a multi-week process, kind of a first phase of instruction that would last for about four weeks. And then they go back and they, they essentially level set students again. And they would essentially adjust them into different groups based off of kind of need or where they're at. We did hear from some families that kind of both ends, where they, they felt like the, the level that their child was placed in may have been too low. And then there were some instances where they believed that the level may have been too rigorous or too high for where they are right now. As far as how students were placed, Book Nook uses kind of an algorithm, but they use our data. So the data that we provided to them, whether it's from M-class data or exact path data, those pieces were provided to Book Nook for them to be able to place students. But I am fully aware of those concerns, and we will continue to push, you know, with Book Nook, to make sure that students are appropriately placed. Book Nook did respond directly to families on the information session last week when they asked and, and took those individual student names at that time, and, and are working kind of in individual communication with families to ensure that they are handling that appropriately. But that's something that we would want to be more widespread for everybody.
Great. And with the end of your M-class, that might be good data for them to
Absolutely.
Level students.
Is that sufficient, Ms. Smiley?
The evaluation piece? How are we evaluating student growth?
So student growth is evaluated within the program. So there, there are assessments that happen within the program to where they're able to, to track essentially student growth. And it's not just about student interest in reading, but they're actually tracking them within the system, almost like a progress monitoring tool. And again, that, that's more information that, that we could provide in a board weekly update to potentially like show what that process looks like, if that would be helpful.
I think it would. And I think, I mean, just from my perspective, I think we should be using our own internal data about students' growth in reading and in order to also evaluate what we think the impact is. That's all. Thank you, Ms. Stevens. And thank you, Dr. Felder.
Thank you. All right. So now, well, if the information that we've been given is palatable to all the board members, we will accept Mr. Atherton's motion and Ms. Howser's second, and I will call the vote. Atherton?
Yes.
Doyle?
Yes.
Howser? Moore?
Yes.
Smiley?
Yes.
And Stevens says yes. Thank you very much. Motion passes. And now we will move down to, I think I saw it on the screen just a moment ago, graduation update. Thank you, Mrs. Stevens. And so, yes, tonight, we want to share with the board and our families, staff and students who are listening in the graduation schedule for 2021. So as you know, this is a time of year that we all look forward to, and we are fortunate to have our principals joining us tonight. So Mr. Stan Farrington, Principal of Partnership Academy, Mr. Matt Hunt, Principal of Orange High School, and Dr. Carlos Ramirez, Principal of Cedar Ridge.
Mr. Matt Hunt, Principal of Orange High School, and Dr. Carlos Ramirez, Principal of Cedar Ridge High School will be sharing the plan for this year's graduation ceremonies. Also joining us is Mr. Jarwin Hester, the new Director for Health and Safety and Environmental Health. And so he has been working with our principals as, has a group of central office staff meeting regularly. We've involved the Orange County Health Department. And the schools will also share the process that they use to develop the plan for this year. So with that, going to turn things over to Mr. Farrington.
Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone is doing well. We at Partnership Academy are extremely excited about our upcoming graduation ceremony. As you can see on the slide, the graduation is scheduled to take place at the Orange County Speedway on Thursday, June 3rd at 10 o'clock in the morning. And the rain date is that following Friday, June 4th at 10 a.m. Last year, we certainly needed a rain date. I think we had to postpone it like two or three times. So we're crossing our fingers and hoping for great weather. But and as of right now, though, we anticipate having 14 graduates. And we, the Orange County Speedway was, you know, we used it last year for the very first time. And the word got out, our graduates were really excited about the way it went. And they have sort of influenced the upcoming class, this year's class, using pictures and word of mouth. And so it was unanimous, all of our graduates wanted to go back to the Speedway this year with the hope of outdoing last year's group and having just as much fun, if not more. So that's how we sort of came about that. We didn't really have to poll them. They came and said, hey, can we do it at the Speedway also? So that worked out really nicely. And we're going to be using the same, it's almost a drive-in format where the cars pull in and they're facing the stage. They're right in front of the stage and they can sit in their cars and listen to the ceremony in the air conditioning on the radio. Or they can get out and sit in their seats, of course, based on the governor's orders. But certainly we are prepared for whatever situation is going to be most fitting. And that's where we are with that. So we're really excited. We're looking forward to it. One of the highlights, of course, is the victory lap where they line up behind the Orange County Sheriff's Department vehicle and they get a couple laps around the track, you know, once they receive their diploma. So it's really an exciting time and our students are really looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farrington. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for having us today. And we're thrilled about the Orange High graduation. It's June 11th at 10 a.m. on our football field. The rain date is going to be June 12th. We know families will be still in town, visiting families from out of town. So we, the rain date will be June 12th, as Mr. Farrington mentioned, though it's going to be great weather. So it will be on June 11th. Wanted to also thank, you know, the team, you know, Mr. Farrington, Dr. Ramirez, Dr. Felder, Dr. Dawson, Mr. Hester, and a lot of others who we've been meeting regularly for weeks to get prepared for the event. And we know that there's been changing guidelines throughout. And so we've been keeping a close eye on that. Once UNC decided they weren't going to host any outside graduations, we started to hear from our families in terms of what they wanted. We were hearing from families who really loved the drive-through last year, that format. And then we were also hearing from families who wanted a more traditional, a traditional setting. And so we felt like in order to get a good handle on things, we wanted to poll our seniors to see how they felt. You know, they're the most important people in this equation and we know it's been an incredibly challenging year. And so at Orange, we polled our seniors, we heard, I'm sorry. We heard from about 160 of our 300 graduates. And of the 160 that gave us an answer, about 85% said that they wanted a traditional ceremony in the football field. About 15% said they opted for the drive-through. So we went with the traditional. We're gearing up for it. I'm going to kick it off to Dr. Ramirez because Orange High and Cedar Ridge are looking at very similar models with the football field setup. And so I'm going to kick it over to Dr. Ramirez at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Good evening, board members and community and staff. We're excited to present the 2021 graduates. We have been working very hard as a community to plan. And as you see the dates, we're on the same date, but we're in the evening. Hopefully it'll be nice and cool. And we're on the 50-yard line on our football field. Just like last year, remember, board members, we had the exactly, exact same stadium or stage. So we're excited about that. We will have makeup day on the 12th at the same time. We have 230 students that we expect to walk the stage with us. And the process we use, as Mr. Hunt said, we've had quite a few meetings. We meet weekly. We also have a team, a committee at our school made up of students and staff members. And it's very interesting, our numbers are almost identical with our survey results when we polled our students. They want an in-person ceremony. And when we asked them why, most students said it's because it'll be the last time that they'll be with their peers. So they're really looking forward to that. So that is our plan in a nutshell.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Hunt and Dr. Ramirez. So at this time, we are going to punt to Mr. Hester. And Mr. Hester is going to walk us through the logistics. So, Mr. Hester?
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Felder, vice chairperson, Stevens, board members, community, staff, students, and families. And if you go to the next slide, there we are. How do we get here? That's what we're all here for. First of all, let me say thank you for the opportunity to speak. And also to say that safety and health of our students and our staff are the chief primary components and chief priority for what we do here today. Now, after receiving input from the staff and from the principals, I began researching and putting in some information as to the logistics of this process. And I was excited about the opportunity for the 2021 in-person graduation commencement. So first, we worked with the Orange County Health Department and the staff with GIS and some others to look at the ceremony and the locations to see what would be the best place to conduct it, safe protocols and guidelines. So for this graduation, we're going to have four tickets we'll be able for each graduate, for their family members, who will be physically distant in the prescribed locations on the field in the stadium. Now attendees, given the current regulations, they say that masking is one of the recommendations we're going to recommend, that there's masking during the graduation primarily to reduce the exposure from folks from different households. That's a key consideration. So as we move forward with that, we're going to look at some of the logistical items. And then one of those things we're looking at for these decisions was the definitely transportation, the physical distancing, the crowd control, and some of those items such as cleaning too as well, to see if we could factor into this and make it for a safe, safe environment. In addition to that, we're going to have areas for ADA, so wheelchair accessible. Individuals will be free to come, first come, first served to areas to say they can be seated with an occupant. And definitely if they need assistance, there'll be areas and individuals for that. In addition, minimizing that social distance with congregation during and after events and the gathering. These are chief areas of concern and having stations inside the area for sanitation and for disinfecting. Definitely we want to try to look at handshaking, no handshaking. And having at least 60% of alcohol in this case throughout the event so folks can stay safe. And these type of areas are some of the protocols that we put into play. And in addition to that, we're also looking at trying to find ways to help improve communication. So everyone will be understanding of the COVID-19 requirements and ideas. This main reason for doing this, the in-person, is for the low COVID numbers that we have in our environment right now and the increased vaccinations. And for that reason, this in-person event, we wanted to be in place following OCS guidelines and our safety plan and policies. And this will be in conclusion of what I want to speak about today. So if you have any questions, just let me know. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hester. All right. Any questions at all? Because that concludes the high school graduation update.
No questions. So it appears that we're going to go to the next item with the OCS Online Academy. And thank you, principals, for your time. Thank you for coming this evening.
Stevens, I do have a, Stevens, I do have a couple of questions.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
It's okay. It's okay. So I first wanted to thank Mr. Hester and all the principals for all your hard work on this. I know it's been very different. I just had a few questions and thoughts or just wanted to hear what y'all have been thinking because this is a little different than what we've done before. One of the questions is, you know, I know that it's not explicitly said in here, but I assume we're going to be taking pictures that are free and giving them to the parents. Is that, is that true? Last year, we took pictures and shared them. So when they're getting their diploma, that was just included. So we weren't having parents, you know, rush and try to take pictures. Or now we're in the stadium, them jumping out of their seats to run up and try to take pictures of their child. Are we including pictures this year? Or what is our guidance to families that may want to get up from their seat, walk down and take pictures that we call as congregation?
Well, and Mr. Atherton, in terms of pictures, we're still reaching out to Strawbridge to have that conversation.
Right, right.
Okay. So are we going to, I just want to make sure that we give guidance to parents that we socially distance out, that as soon as the ceremony starts, they don't go down to the bottom of the fence line to start taking pictures and us to have an issue with the congregation. The other, the other question I had, or just to hear if there's thoughts around it, is one of the very popular things from last year's program was before and after event pictures that were staged at different places in the school and allowed the families to go there in small groups to take those pictures. Have we, have we considered those to make sure that we control that? Or are we saying, no, you can't? Or have we thought about picture stations that people could do after the event or before the event to try to help alleviate maybe some of those problems that may occur with that?
Mr. Atherton?
This is Dawson. Good evening, everyone. Those are details that we're looking into. As you may know, that there are very strict guidelines at any time that there are large groups together. And so, you know, because what they're saying, when, should there be larger groups of people together, they must stay seated, right? There's no standing and all of that. So those are details that we're looking, continuing to look into further as we look at what are the logistics around trying to have those types of events. So once we finalize those details, we'll definitely be sure to get back to you. And we do understand that families in our schools are planning. So we, like Mr. Hunt said, we are meeting every week to continue to work out all these details. So as soon as we get those, we would be sure to share them out as quickly as we can.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Dawson and Mr. Johnson. But if I could just also add a layer on here. So last year, we were able to do what we did because of the type of graduation ceremony we had, which was the drive-through version. And so again, this year will be different. And we are working through, as Dr. Dawson said, a number of items that we are still trying to see if they're going to even be feasible or possible while maintaining safety, which remains the number one priority. So we should have more of a definitive response in the weeks to come. But just to be clear, there may be some things that we were able to do last year that we won't be able to do this year, given the type of ceremony we're having this year versus last year.
It makes perfect sense. I just want to make sure we're setting the expectation of this because, like you said, it's very different. The last question I have is more of a generic question that I know that in history has been tradition, but I haven't heard what the ruling on this is. Is in the past, we have had seniors go through their elementary schools, whether they're open or closed, right? That have walked through and walked through the halls. And I know that last year, we were not able to do that. COVID, lots of issues. I don't know if that has been discussed this year and if there's thoughts around that. Or have we notified as part, again, of that expectation of, is this something we will be doing? And how do we do it safely if we do?
So our, our high school principals did connect with our elementary principals to discuss this event. And due to the timing, because our, as you know, our elementary schools are preparing for end-of-year exams and closing up here. And that coupled with the safety precautions, the team decided that this year we would also forego this event. And then hopefully next year, when things, hopefully next year, things will be more back to some of our traditions that we can pick that back up. But at this time for this year, the team had decided that it was not in the best interest of, for safety as well as timing due to end-of-year closing events for our elementary students.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody, for all of the comments and focus on this. I know it's very difficult. Lots of families excited and, you know, just trying to keep it safe. Thank you all.
Yeah, thanks to everyone. And I want to dovetail on with what something Jason has mentioned. For years, we've had a longstanding arrangement with Strawbridge to take the pictures. And I would hope that we will be able to go back to that this year since it's, you know, on the football field. And to have Strawbridge to do it, we won't have a congestion. So Jason, I hope that you'll be able to work that out because Strawbridge has been a good community partner for us. Thank you, principals. And go forth and do great things, principals. Bye.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Yes. OCS Online Academy survey data and information timeline?
All right. Good evening. Thank you, Ms. Stevens. At our most recent board meeting on April 26th, our district leadership team presented some initial ideas around the 100% virtual learning option for Orange County schools for next school year. Based on feedback our team received from stakeholders during and after that meeting, as well as evolving legislation, I'll be sharing our latest updates this evening on the Orange County Schools Online Academy. The latest Senate bill, 654, on the Senate floor, which has been approved, essentially states that only districts who received authorization to open a new virtual school with its own school number prior to May 1st of this year may offer a virtual option next school year. What this essentially means is that we will not be able to offer the same type of virtual or remote learning options that we did this year. But we did apply and receive a new school number prior to that May 1st date. That's why we do have the option, the possibility to open the Orange County Schools Online Academy. It will be only at this virtual school that we can offer the virtual or the remote option for next school year. Next slide, please. Last week, Orange County Schools shared a family interest survey with our community. As of yesterday evening, we've compiled 165 responses. 141 of those responses, roughly 85% of have expressed a desire for their students to attend the Orange County Schools Online Academy next year. Of the 141 responses who expressed interest, all Orange County schools were represented. The highest percentages coming from our middle and high schools. Additionally, next slide, please. And one more slide, and I do apologize. Additionally, we've been able to disaggregate the data to inform our team of the total amount of students requesting the Orange County Schools Online Academy option. Students requiring AIG, EC, ESL, or other specialized services are being tracked as part of this survey. So you can see those on this slide. Next slide, please. Through the interest survey, we also provided families an opportunity Through the interest survey, we also provided families an opportunity to dig deeper into their reasoning for requesting the Orange County Schools Online Academy option. Over 80% of the responses landed within two big themes. One of those is just current academic success. So families are noting that their child is currently doing well with the online option is kind of one of the key reasons. A second primary reason is due to health and safety concerns. There are families that are still concerned about COVID and/or masking requirements. And then there are some other common themes that maybe aren't quite as prevalent as those largest two. But those themes are things like a better fit for family schedule as a reason for being interested in the online academy. Next slide, please. It's important to note that some families did offer a twofold approach within their responses. For example, some families stated, yes, they'd like to pursue the online academy option, but would prefer that their child return to the in-person learning option instead if they are to be vaccinated. Additionally, Orange County Schools has fielded inquiries from charter and homeschool families who are interested in learning more about the online academy option. As of today, the online academy option will consist of students in grades kindergarten through 12th grade. Certified teachers will be assigned to all students. Students will engage in asynchronous learning with some synchronous instruction and tutoring opportunities as needed. Some lessons and tutoring sessions may be taught synchronously by that assigned certified teacher. And those tutoring sessions could happen in the late afternoon and/or on Saturdays. And that could be any day, Monday through Friday in the afternoons. Students and families are able to develop their own daily schedule for coursework that will be accessible through an online portal. Again, as noted earlier, students who receive AIG, EC, and/or EL services will continue to receive these services. But we do want to note that not all elective courses will be offered. Those may include band, chorus, the International Baccalaureate Program, Project Lead the Way, welding, and others. Final decisions will be made on or before May 25 about the online academy, and that's pending the final family survey results. And we do want to make note that students will be required to be in person for some of the school level and for all of the district level and state level required testing. Next slide, please. There are several frequently asked questions that we've received or that we anticipate receiving around the online academy. One of those is what type of curriculum will be used? The Orange County Schools Online Academy will use the same curriculum that we are currently using in our schools for the most part. High schools will also have access to the North Carolina Virtual Public School or NCBPS and Edge Annuity as needed. As far as leadership of the school, there will be an executive director that is an overseer of the school, but there will also be a building level administrator as well as other support staff, including counselors, that would be serving the school in a temporary terminating contract fashion. Another question that we anticipate receiving is around learning coaches or teachers of record. As noted earlier, certified teachers will be available to work afternoons, evenings, and Saturdays. We will prioritize our Orange County Schools teachers first to lead this work. However, if other adjunct staff are used, for example, retired teachers, that may also allow some flexibility with hours during the day. And then finally, the last couple of pieces to note. A diploma for a student who graduates from the Orange County Schools Online Academy, it will be issued from the online academy, not the previous high school of attendance. And the cost at this time, we have an estimated cost analysis that will be determined after those final survey results are compiled. A minimum number of 100 students will be required for us to successfully open an Orange County Schools Online Academy. But one mandate from our, the most recent House Bill 644 is that the online academy cannot exceed 10% of the total population of our school district. So the cap would be, it cannot go over 10%. And then finally, a commitment from families. We are asking that if families do choose to enroll, they will be required to for the entire 2021, 2022 school year. Next slide, please. And finally, the last slide that you see here, we do have a timeline that we've put together as far as next steps around the online academy. Again, the week of May 10, which is this week, we will be able to have that final determination of the number of interested students. Next week, the week of May 17, we'll be able to determine staffing that will be needed based off of those interest survey numbers. The following week, which is the week of May 24, we will finalize a decision around the opening of the Orange County Schools Online Academy. And then a little bit further out in the months of June and July, the application process will open, determining school level leadership, job descriptions for teachers, as far as refining the curriculum and instruction framework for the school, and then preparing a brick and mortar location. All those pieces will take place in June and July. And then in August, we will hold orientation for families. And then an official start to the online academy would occur at that time, pending the decisions that are made the week of May 25. So at this time, are there any questions about this update?
Ms. Howser?
I have a simple one. During our meeting, the FDA approved the Pfizer vaccine for 12-year, 12- to 16-year-olds. I wonder if you think the availability of vaccines for children is going to affect interest?
At this time, I wouldn't be able to guarantee. I do know based off of the survey results that we received, as I noted earlier, we have had some families that have noted that they would like to exercise this option, but if their child is able to be vaccinated, their preference will be to return to the in-person learning environment. But having solid numbers around that at this point, we're not clear on yet.
All right, Sarah, Ms. Miley.
Thanks. So a question about the staff that would be having temporary terminating contracts, like school counselors and some of the other school staff. Would they be able to support online students during the school day if they had both of those things? Or would their, would their contact with online academy students be limited to their non-working hours in their regular job? That might be a question for Ms. Dubison.
Ms. Dubison, of course, is welcome to respond. But our expectation would be because our staff are working full-time during the school day, that if this is additional responsibilities they would be taking on above and beyond under a TTC, we would expect that they would meet with the students and support them after their regular work hours. And that's why we were saying that when they were having in-person sessions, the students with either their counselor, social workers, or their teacher, that it would be after school hours and on Saturdays as scheduled with the student and the online student and the families.
And if I could just add, thank you, Dr. Dawson. Unless, of course, some of these staff are maybe from a retired group and therefore their hours would be very different. But if you are currently employed, and again, Ms. Dubison, if you want to respond, that would be great. But our understanding is one would not be able to do this during the time that they are in their full-time work.
Yes, that's right. If someone is a full-time teacher, they're expected to be, you know, they completing their regular job duties during the school workday and and to some extent, you know, outside of that workday.
Yeah, I mean, to me, that would tip things in a, should we prioritize our staff members? Or should we try to find some retired teachers? Or, I mean, the sort of like, I am having a crisis in the middle of the day and I want to talk to a counselor. And the idea that then they wouldn't be able to reach out to that person during the day because they're not allowed to speak to them during the school day or something is concerning to me. So yeah.
Sorry, I think I can speak to that. But certainly, if a student was having a crisis in the middle of the day, they would still have the principal who is, who would be a full-time employee to reach out to the parent would. And then, you know, just like we do if a student has an after-hours emergency, we get people to, to address that. So I understand your concern, Ms. Miley, but certainly we would not leave any student out there to be struggling through the day. We would address that.
Do we have any more questions?
Sorry, I do have one more. The 100-person limit in order to, like, we need a minimum of 100. Can, can someone just explain that more to me?
So usually, from DPI, when working with other school models, the cutoff is 100 when DPI would provide additional, like, support with the funding referred principle. When they have, they don't always fund, right? But when they have, the cutoff is usually 100 students. And to an earlier question, because when you looked at the reasoning for why families were showing their interest in an online, over 51% of them had indicated that it was because of their concern due to COVID. And so if there were vaccinations and other safety measures that were progressing, there's a very good likelihood that students would be returning to school back in person. That's, that's part of the reason why this has taken as long as it has in our planning, just because things are continuing to evolve. And so, but we also know that we do have to make a decision if we're going to proceed with the school or not. And so we hope to within the next couple of weeks.
Do you have any additional questions, Sarah? All right, thank you. Do we have any other comments on that?
One, Ms. Stevens.
Yes, sir.
When the financial analysis comes back, I just want to make sure that it clearly shows how we're going to be funding this. You know, for example, a new principal, right? We, you know, are we getting that from ESRS? Are we planning this as a short-term, you know, item or a long-term? Or the additional staff, how are we doing that? I mean, I know we are getting ADM and these students are in the class, but they're moving, you know, to the school, they're moving to another. But we're not reducing in those schools. So I just want to make sure, you know, as a, as a, you know, as a board member, I know how we're thinking about funding this and where those funds come from. Once we get that. And I know I've heard a couple of times, when the survey results are in, what date have we given families to finalize that? I thought it was originally May 9. Have we extended that?
As far as the, this online interest survey, it did close at midnight last night.
Right. Okay, so y'all are just getting that to determine the final number and then doing the financial analysis and how this would work?
So yes, this is like preliminary interest to, and we're not giving, providing more data than what we have, just because we do have to clean up some data because there is, you know, just looking at, are there any repeats of these responses and such? So we'll clean, we'll clean this up. We'll take a look at disaggregating. Is it like, how many students per grade? What do all that look like? And then based on that, you know, what will our staffing needs be? And as we, you know, take a look at, you know, the funding, we've been very careful with the funding in the sense that, you know, especially this initial year, just because of a lot of families wanting this possibly as, you know, a gap measure while we're still in COVID and not trying to pull staff allotments from our schools. That's why we're looking for alternative ways to approach, especially this first year. And then after this first year, we'll have to take a look at differently how, if this is to continue long-term, which we do hope that it will in the sense that if this is a good fit for some of our students, we do want this opportunity for them. The funding, you know, we'll have to, we'll have to continue to revisit.
The last question I had was, I still feel that there's an opportunity to work with Chapel Hill on maybe the high school part, right? Because if they have a need and they're only focused on high school and they don't have to hire a principal and all of that, I think there may be some economies of scale that would enable us to maybe have a different financial model with leveraging the ADM of their students. But I think, I think we should at least investigate that portion if there's still interest from their side on high school or others. I think whatever funding, given what we've heard from the county commissioners at this point, I think anything we can consider to help, you know, all of Orange County students would be a good thing, especially in a virtualized environment. Thank you.
And yes, Mr. Atherton, and we, our communication lines are open with Chapel Hill, and we are continuing to be in communication to see are there any possibilities? Should there be a need for one?
Right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Dawson. I don't see any other hands. So if not, we've received that information and we're on to PCR testing update. Well, I guess we're not. Okay, all right.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. We're, we're Orange County Schools Summer Scholars Academy. And this slide that you're looking at was presented at the last board meeting. While we knew all along we were going to offer learning opportunities for our students during the summer, our Summer Scholars Program will meet the requirements of House Bill 82. And the program will focus on remediation, readiness, and enrichment with SEL and PE. It will be a six-week program with the first session being June 14 through July 2 with a break for the July 4 week. The second session will be July 12 through July 30. And it will be an all-day session lasting from 8 to 5, Monday through Thursday, with free childcare on Fridays. The morning block will be from 8 to 12:15, and the afternoon block will be from 12:30 to 5. And transportation and meals will be provided. We're still trying to determine our locations, and that will be based off our student enrollment. We also have an email address that's dedicated to Orange County Schools Summer School. And Franklin McCune is manning that. Also, you'll notice on the right side of this slide is, is just an example of our schedule with arrival starting at 7:30 with morning mindfulness. Our morning block will focus on academics in terms of math, literacy, and science. And then we will have lunch and SEL check-in. We will also have an afternoon block, which will focus on enrichment. Our high schools will have a focus on credit recovery and their schedules will be slightly different. Our student sign-ups also were due yesterday midnight, May 9. Next slide, please. On this slide, you would note our student signup. We had 1,105 families complete their application for summer scholars. And if you look at Grab number 2, that represents our students and what schools they're attending this year. A majority of our students are coming from New Hope, Cameron Park, and Eflin Cheeks. On Grab 3, you'll note that these are the students and what sessions they wanted to sign up for. Over 70% of our families wanted to sign up for their child up for both sessions. And on Grab 4, I want to sign my child up for the following blocks. 75% of our families that responded to the survey wanted their child to attend both blocks, meaning that they wanted their child to attend summer scholars from 8 to 5 o'clock. Families that need a transportation, 48% of our students will need transportation for both morning and afternoon. And 43% of our families are saying that they do not need transportation. And that will be grabbed. And 43% of our families are saying that they do not need transportation and that will be grab five. For grab six, my child need childcare, my child need childcare on Fridays. 68% of our families are saying that they do not need childcare on Fridays. With that said, I will ensure that these graphs are sent to you in the weekly updates this Friday. Next slide, please. In terms of our staff signup, we had 70 elementary school teachers to sign up, 27 middle school teachers to sign up, 19 high school teachers to sign up, and 67 of our classified staff signup. And at this time, we do not have, at the central office level, the breakdown of our at-risk students. But the schools do and they do know who their at-risk students are and they are actively recruiting our at-risk students. With that said, at the high school level and the middle school level, they know exactly who their at-risk students are and they're being defined as students who had F'd for this school year. As for recruitment efforts, we had a family information session last week, which was well-attended. Our family liaisons are reaching out and so are teachers, councils, and school administrators. There is a strong outreach at the school level, trying to ensure we reach as many of our at-risk students as possible. Like I mentioned earlier, we're, we're meeting, we're still working on our locations for summer scholars. We're meeting this Wednesday to solidify our summer scholars. We will, our location for summer scholars, we will be looking at student numbers, construction at school sites and transportation. We're also looking at increasing staff compensation in order to recruit more teachers. We're trying to bring our compensation up to and into alignment with our surrounding districts. Also during summer scholars, we will follow safety product protocols that we currently have in place and will make adjustments as the governor and our North Carolina Health Department makes adjustments. And of course, we will work closely with Orange County Health, our Orange County Health Department to ensure we're following all safety protocols. We're also meeting this week to discuss an attendance policy for summer scholars that will be flexible and supportive of our students. And finally, we're also looking for enrichment opportunities that focus on student growth that are STEM-related and inquiry-based with emphasis on our underrepresented population as well as our ELL students and students with disabilities. We're also willing to partner with outside organizations that are offering opportunities for our students such as book notes and other community resources. At this time, I will pause for any questions.
All right, well, we have a number. Will and Carrie and Brenda, and we will start off, we'll start off with Carrie since, you know, go on, and then Will and then if there's somebody else.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Stevens, and thank you, Mr. Johnson. I had a question about realizing that a lot of the upper-tier staff are qualified or certified to teach the elementary school. It seemed like about 80% of the interested students are K-5, but it looks like we have a sizable proportion of teachers in the middle and high school. So I just was wondering how that's going to work.
Is Dawn, do you mind repeating that question?
Just noticing, Sarah, that about, it looked like 80% in, in one of your charts of the students were from our K-5 tier. Whereas our, the proportions of elementary school teachers who signed up, it's, you know, 70 out of 110 or something, 120. So so would we have the upper-tier teachers working with the younger students? Is there any need to match that up more proportionally or does that just sort of blend fine?
Well, I think it will blend fine. We, we had some of our upper-tier teachers that have signed up to teach, like RTA camp and teach some of the young grades.
Thank you. Mr. Atherton.
Thank you. So my understanding from the, the bill is we must offer summer school to anyone within our district, whether they attend our schools or not. Have we, at one, I wanted to confirm that from the bill. And then the second is, if that's true, have we had anyone sign up outside of our district and how, or outside of our schools that are within our district? And how are they able to sign up? What is the process that we're using to, to trap that or get them into the program?
And Mr. Atherton, I'm not sure, I'm not clear if any, I haven't noticed any students to sign up outside of the district, but I'm not overly familiar with that portion of the bill. Maybe somebody on the team could speak to that.
Yes, Jason, thank you for that. You know, your team is here, right? So the charter schools, they've been allotted. And I know that Ms. Rath can explain that one better on the charter school one. But the charter school students, their schools have been funded for this. So if their students were to come and participate, they, they would have to, I think there would be some funds that would have to return to us. And then as far as our private school students, there has been outreach to let them know. And as of right now, we have not heard of any interest from them. So Ms. Rath, are you able to give a little bit more background and do a better explanation than what I did as far as charter school students?
Yeah, I believe what you were referring to, Dr. Doc, is that when we received our allotments, the charter schools.
Yeah. Yeah, so when, I'll try to say this, when we received our lot, funding for charter school, that money goes, passes through us to the charter school. So the charter school receives funding and therefore they should have, sorry, I think Ms. Rath is letting us know that she's having technical difficulties. But, so, so yes. In simple terms, charter school students would not be able to participate for free as where private school students, they have been given the opportunity to participate should they want to. We just have not heard any interest as of right now. But I do want to say that last Thursday, we did hold a family, a parent information session. And we had a great turnout, over 100 and some odd families showed up for that event. And there was some inquiries at that evening from families about home-school students, private school students, if they wanted to participate. So should families want to participate in that way? You know, there is a generic open link on our website that they can sign up if they're interested. And then again, this is another set of data that we do have to go and clean up because what we also heard on Thursday, families, once they received more information and we had more dialogue about how summer school was going to go, they were very excited. And they might have signed up for maybe just one three-week session versus the full six or maybe just in the morning when they said, you know, they were going to go back and change that. And so that may mean that we have duplicate sign-ups. So we'll go and clean some of that up to ensure that we have the right count and then make appropriate plans accordingly.
Okay, and the other question I had was more about the high school level. I know, Mr. Watson, you mentioned earlier, it was focused on the credit recovery. But I've been getting some questions from the community about, hey, my student took algebra or geometry, they really didn't get it. I'd really love for them to go back and get more. Or my student feels like I need, you know, to, to get more because they felt like they didn't comprehend it well. Are we going to give those opportunities to high school to go in to do that additional learning? Or is it, nope, it's a grade, you've got to, you know, do it as a credit recovery? You know, just can you provide a little more on that? Because I, I think it's more open than what we're saying, but I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth about the high school program.
So HBE 2 requires that we offer remediation readiness and enrichment K through 12. So you're absolutely right, Mr. Atherton. At the high school level, students will have the opportunity to receive additional support. If they didn't fail the course, but they feel they're not quite ready, that they, you know, of course, can receive those services. And if a student has not been contacted and that's something that they would like, of course, they should connect with their teacher and their administration at their school. The priority is our, our at-risk students. And so right now, that is where the schools are really paying attention to ensure that they are identifying those students and doing the additional outreach to those students. But again, this signup was open to K through 12. So if there, I know that we do have some high school students who have signed up through this portal as well as at the schools, at the high schools, they are doing a concerted outreach to those who they know are at risk. Just like Mr. Johnson said, that while general signup closed midnight last night, that schools are continuing to do outreach for our at-risk students who we know need that additional support to make sure that they're ready for the fall.
And Mr. Atherton, to your point, I'm meeting with the high school administrators tomorrow and that's actually one of our agenda topics.
Okay, thank you both. Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, mine is just a, today, the board received a communication from a parent, parent that had a level of discomfort with the fact that that email that you mentioned on the first slide, the parent communicated, and I can sort of understand it, that she didn't like it that in the signature line, there wasn't a name.
Yes. You know. I did, I did receive that. Yes, Ms. Stevens.
Okay, yeah, we want that. Okay.
I did receive that and I will be following up with that.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Hauser?
Okay, a couple of questions. First, I want to thank you. I think you're making really good progress on this, so thanks for that. As the numbers do come in and solidify, I don't want you to waste time on it now, but I would love to see it in a table that shows schools, number of kids by grade by school. So we can see how it's playing out. I wonder how big is the gap for teachers and how many more teachers, you know, that, you know, I mean, I don't know how many teachers are full-time or part-time, but how big is the gap? So it'd be really helpful if you could connect those dots for us. Also, I also got really good feedback on the parent session, but people commented that it was noticed very late. So people didn't have time to, they didn't know what's coming. And I think in that note that Brenda just mentioned, that you also haven't seen the recording yet, that you'd like to see it in order to decide to sign up. So I wondered if it's going to be possible to host another parent session. I think there really, there's more interest if we hosted another session and gave people advanced notice. And then finally, if I'm saying this correctly, it's still open for signup. People could, the schools are recruiting, people could still sign up. Could we update our website and other information so that people know that? Because some people think it's closed and if it's open, they really need to know that so they can sign up.
Received. Thank you, Ms. Hauser.
Stevens, can I ask a question next?
Yes, please.
Thank you. So I am really glad that the schools at the school level are reaching out to their students that they have identified who most need it. I am concerned, I guess, that at a district level, we don't know what that list is or we don't have a way of tracking that. We don't, you know, we don't know at a district level right now what percentage of these 1,105 students are high-risk students. Or maybe you do, but, but I guess both for the summer program and for our, what we're doing as a district in general to help students make up some lost ground. I guess I'm just concerned that we don't have sort of a data system to understand who those students are.
So please pardon us if we weren't clear. Especially around our younger children and the Read to Achieve initiative. We actually have quite a bit of data and our new executive director of literacy, Ms. Wilson, has done a lot of analysis around student data to identify which students, based upon their M-class data, need the additional support. And we've actually even expanded that beyond the range in which the state has identified to make sure that our students receive additional support for readiness. And each school, they have received that list. So we actually do know who, which of our students are on that list. And each school has been given that list. What we didn't have for you today is a breakdown of the kids who did sign up because again, they had till midnight last night. The last call I did was 11:00 PM last night. And so, and then again, like we're saying, that we do need to clean up the data because we will have some that are multiple sign-ups and such. So it's not that we don't know, we do know, we just didn't have the time to disaggregate and to do that. But the schools are doing that. They get regular list of sign-ups, email to them so that they can see, okay, here's our list of students who we know we need to target. And then here are from our signup peers who have signed up, who haven't. And they're doing that much more, you know, detailed than we are. So it's not that we don't have it, we just didn't have the time to prepare for presentation for you this evening. But we can get you that update and a weekly update this Friday if you'd like.
That would be great and thank you for that further information about, it's reassuring that you do have that information. I, I would also just, sometimes I wonder if we collectively try to protect families and students from, you know, true understanding of, of where their students are and whether we're worried about them. And so I think, you know, making sure that families understand that as well, if, if a student is, you know, identified as, you know, a student we're concerned about, that, that we're really having like one-to-one conversation with the family so they can understand that.
So, Mrs. Smiley, thank you. And I, I can assure you that the schools are doing a great job in reaching out to families, particularly those that they are most concerned about, to share the concern and why summer school would be, this program would be a good option for them. But your point is well-taken, but schools are working really hard. They know who their kids are and which ones really could benefit from this program. And that level of outreach is happening at the school level.
All right, do we have any more questions on this item? If not, we, because it's after 9:00 and we do have several more items and we'd like to get through them without having to have enough move forward. All right, so the next, Jason, I think you and Sharita will have the next two, correct?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
It's like, okay.
I was trying to unmute.
I get it, I get it.
Um, I am before you tonight, just to speak a little bit about the vaccinations for students 16-plus. And just a tidbit about the 12th to 16th, since that law has now, or that has now been approved. But let's start with our 16-plus. Through a partnership with Hillsboro Pharmacy and the approval of Orange County Health Department, we have offered the Pfizer vaccine to our 16 and older students. There was no cost to families for the vaccination if they did not have health insurance. It is covered though by those who had health insurance. It is covered 100%. Indycare Hillsboro Pharmacy applied for COVID funds for the uninsured students. So no student was left without vaccination if they wanted it because of finances. The vaccines were given at the high schools, Orange High, Cedar Ridge, and Partnership. ID was required for those that were 18 and over and insurance cards if applicable. And parents had to complete permission. And parents had to complete permission forms for students who were under the age of 18. Appointments for those second vaccines have been set for Friday, May 28th, at Orange High School, and Thursday, May 27th, for Cedar Ridge and Partnership. The permission forms were embedded in the links that were provided for families who are not, for children who are not 18 or older. And a Spanish translation of that registration form was made available as well for parents and students to click on once they chose their individual school link. Orange County Schools is continuing our work with Hillsborough Pharmacy and Orange County Health Department on vaccinations. And we've been in conversation and through the approval of the Health Department, now that the 12th to 16th vaccination has been approved, we will begin setting up appointments to have those vaccinations made available to our families as well. And there will be a parental form and link for them to be able to sign up and make sure that all that paperwork is taken care of. I can tell you that we are really excited. We did vaccinate 60 students last week, and a few parents that came in to complete forms ended up getting vaccinated as well. So we're excited about that and looking at the possibility of how we will offer that again. Are there questions?
Just a lot of kudos. All right, well, you can just move on.
All right, all right. PCR testing. A team made up of Orange County Health Department, the ABC Collaborative, and Orange County School staff met and discussed PCR testing in Orange County Schools by Orange County School staff. At this time, the team is recommending that Orange County Schools not PCR test in the schools by staff based on the criteria below. There's no aggressive community spread at this time. There's been no student-to-staff, staff-to-student, or student-to-student spread within our schools. There is ample community testing sites available. We have been provided those sites by the Hillsborough Orange County Health Department, and we will get those out on our webpage and social media. The cost associated with the setup and human capital, along with time that would be needed for that process, and then the vaccination availability in our community right now. If the need arises for testing, the team will recommend partnering with a lab or facility or company to proceed with those testing options. And we have been in conversation as early as today with some of those outside facilities and companies. The team is also investigating PCR testing for athletes and what that procedure would look like, that cost associated with that, if any. And we were looking at starting that in mid-June. Questions?
Stevens, do we have any questions?
I have a question, Ms. Stevens.
Okay, okay.
For Ms. Cobb, this, this is a question we might not have the answer for yet, and I realize things are progressing. And thank you so much, Ms. Cobb, for all your work getting students vaccinated. Can we imagine what timeframe we might know? I think things like student vaccinations can potentially impact quarantine guidelines for individuals, or, you know, are we going to just have rolling updates throughout the school year and even over the summer as we prepare for next year? Because there are so many overlapping aspects to this in order to keep students safe between, you know, vaccinations and numbers and testing.
Yes, ma'am, so.
Sort of an open-ended question, Ms. Cobb.
So I think I understand what you're saying, but we are continuously evaluating and looking at our numbers and then looking at what our processes are, as well as always consulting with Orange County Health Department and looking at what the state is requiring, and then what Orange County Health Department is saying we will do as a community, and then that's how we build off of that. But we are looking at our numbers, you know, we are keeping up with how many students we are testing, not necessarily who, but how many numbers we are testing and how that will impact how we move forward and how we do our Plan A, B, or what have you as we move forward to August.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cobb. That's very thorough. If we don't have any additional questions for Ms. Cobb or Mr. Johnson, we will move to our next item on the agenda.
Yes, thank you so much, Mrs. Stevens. This is the next and last item. How do you like that? So, yeah, so tonight, I would like to provide the board with an update on where we are with the strategic plan. And so, as shared previously, we're in the process of drafting the next strategic plan. And once again, our strategic, strategic plan is critical, as it will be our North Star and our roadmap. It will articulate our beliefs and values, mission, vision, as well as our goals, to include the objectives, action steps, and how we're going to measure our success for each goal. Through this strategic plan, we, we will hold ourselves accountable as we strive towards greatness for our students. While still in a global pandemic, we are finding ways to engage our stakeholders, our families, staff, students, and the community throughout the process. Next slide, please. So shared previously, to date, we've identified and received feedback on these nine draft belief statements. These statements represent what we value. They are ideals that should motivate the district and should be essential priorities behind every single decision. Next slide, please. Additionally, as shared previously, we've identified and received feedback on the district's next vision and mission statements outlined here. Just as a recap, the vision focuses on tomorrow and what we want to become, while the mission focuses on today and what we do. Next slide, please. So now, we are at this stage in the strategic planning process where, yes, we've drafted out belief statements, vision, and mission statements. We're ready to move to the next stage in the process, and that's getting feedback on draft goals. Our goals are what we're trying to achieve. Our goals will guide our daily work. It's important to note, next slide, please, that these four priorities, identified through the review of quantitative and qualitative data, that these priorities are reflected in the draft goals and that we are soliciting stakeholder feedback and input on. Next slide, please. And so now that we have drafted the belief, vision, mission statements, and are ready to move to the next stage in the process, drafting our goals, and again, our goals are what we're trying to achieve, they will guide our daily work. We are providing yet another opportunity for family and stakeholders to provide input and offer feedback on the draft goals. So last week, a communication was shared with families and community members and staff, and information pushed out by social media and to stakeholder groups, encouraging them to take a couple of minutes to complete the feedback form noted on this slide. There's the link for it by Friday, May 14th. We are also facilitating some information sessions. And for those desiring more information prior to sharing their input and feedback, links to the draft goals, feedback form, and information about the OCS strategic plan are noted on this slide. The drafted goals reflecting stakeholder input and feedback will be shared with the board for your feedback and input at the May 26th work session, May 24th, I'm sorry, work session meeting. So, next slide, please. So where are we again in the process? Again, we've drafted the belief, vision, and mission statements. We're now at the next stage, which is drafting goals. And once the goals are, we've received feedback and confirmed by the board, then each goal will have a goal team, again, made up of board stakeholder representation. And, and these teams will identify the objectives for each goal, the action steps for each goal, as well as the measures for success, the metrics that will be tied to each goal and used as an accountability measure for us. And after that stage, we will finalize the plan, bring it back to the board for review and additional feedback. And once approved, we will communicate the plan and establish an accountability dashboard around the goals. So that's a very quick update on where we are in the strategic planning process. We're at the stage of drafting goals and obtaining input and feedback with regards to those goals. Any questions or comments?
Yes, Sarah Smiley?
Thanks. It's good to see this moving along and us getting feedback on it. I, the question I have is around the, the next phase with the goal teams and the sort of action steps. And like Anna says in the movie Frozen 2, when she sings about the next right thing, or the next best, I think it's the next right thing. You know, one thing that often is on my mind in strategic plans is like, you, you can't know what all of the action steps are for the next five years to, to move towards these goals, and that actually, some of what's needed is what's needed right now, and then revisiting that and what's needed next. And I'm curious if the purpose of those action steps is to attempt to lay out, like, what are all the actions we're going to take over the next five years? Or whether it is to prioritize what are the, what are the most important things we should do now?
Yeah, so, Ms. Smiley, I believe it will be both. And so we do have to forecast and look ahead. And, and then based on that, prioritize and really think about, you know, what, again, are the priorities and what we will, yeah, what will give us the greatest bang for the buck in terms of achieving that goal? And so I think there will be probably a combination, but what's important with any strategic plan, if it is to be a living, breathing plan, is it doesn't sit on a shelf. It is something that we revisit in regular intervals to check our progress, to make course corrections and adjustments, because what we think we need to do now may need to change drastically, slightly be tweaked, or we stay the course. So the goal is that this strategic plan would be a living, breathing document to guide our work. And we will have regular intervals of revisiting and checking progress and making adjustments. So, for example, we may find that we have achieved one of the objectives in, in the goal, for a goal. Well, it, we may then be able to take that goal to the next level or replace that goal with a different goal. And so this is ongoing work for the next three to five years. It will not be stagnant.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional questions for Madam Superintendent? I don't see any. Well, what I will do is I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Madam Chair, I would like to recommend, since we're
Yes.
early, that we go back into closed session for our prior discussion. So I would like to make a motion to go back into closed session for prior reasons stated in the earlier closed session motion.
Second. All right, we have a motion, Mr. Atherton, to go back into closed session rather than having a meeting later as... So Atherton, you vote.
Yes.
All right, Doyle?
Yes.
Hauser? Moore?
Yes.
Smiley?
Yes.
And Stevens votes no. Motion passes, so we will go back into closed session to continue our conversation. Much to my agreement, because we had said we were going to have another meeting. So let's adjourn, we will need to adjourn this meeting, if it's okay. So we will call for adjournment, and before we do that, we need to decide how we're going to go back into closed session. Now let's go and adjourn the meeting. We'll go back into closed session. So will someone please adjourn this meeting, please?
All right. Ms. Stevens, I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Because we're going into closed session, I believe we will have to come out of closed session to adjourn.
And adjourn again. So are we going to go into closed session with Google?
Yes, I will send a new invite if that is helpful. Okay, I'll do that right now.
Please send us a new invite for closed session.
I'm doing that right now.
We'll see you all on the other side.
Yes. You have to, you have to read this.
I need to go just.
You want to have a
Hi, Ms. Doyle. Is open session, is closed session over?
Yes.
Ah ha, I'll go join in the room.
I don't think we've ever met this late. Not in my tenure.
It's so exciting, something new.
Oh Kathleen, you still around?
I think we have met later than this before.
Okay.
But this is pretty close.
Amanda's still with us. Who else from staff are still in reading?
It was just Todd, Amanda and I.
Aw. Well, thank you guys. Well, I know we needed Todd, I'm sorry. Amanda, you could go. I don't know that we won't be flipping, no slide changes, but thank you.
We still have some community members too.
Oh, oh we do? Wonderful. Okay. We've got night owls. Okay.
Yep.
Are we all back? I don't see Will.
I'm here.
I don't see anybody.
Great, you're there in person.
I think we're all here Brenda. I see Ms. Moore, Bonnie and Will in the BOE.
That's funny, I only, okay, that's good. I only see you. So.
You can do whatever.
So we need a motion to approve what we just talked about. Phase, was that, was that phase two? All right. So, oh, well, I can't make that motion. Well, if somebody can articulate.
I move that we approve the phase two portion of the reorganizational chart.
Did we get a second? Is there a second on the table?
Second.
Thank you. So we'll call the vote. Atherton?
Yes.
Doyle?
Yes.
Howser?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Smiley?
Yes.
Stevens and I vote yes. So motion passes. Thank you very much. So do we have anything else that we need to approve? No. So now I will call for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we get a second? Thank you. We'll call for the vote. Atherton?
Yes.
Doyle?
Yes.
Howser?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Smiley and Stevens. Thank you very much. We've done a lot of work. So we are adjourned. Thank you all, everyone.
Have a good night everybody.
Thanks Ms.
Good night.